Well, good afternoon, everyone. I appreciate everybody coming out. Just got a break, a little break in the weather. It's 2:01 and it's time to call our fourth mission of the meeting Thursday, January 26th. To order. We'd like to have a roll call, please.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
President.
Commissioner Obachowski. Commissioner McFarland.
President.
Commissioner Turnbull.
President.
Commissioner Salin.
Here.
Okay. Can we get an approval of the agenda?
I assume it will be intended to be approved.
Second.
The proper move is second. Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski. Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salin.
Yes.
Are there any further comments on the agenda items only? There you go. I'd like to have approval of our minutes, motion, and second.
So move.
Second.
And probably move in a second. A roll call.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salin.
Yes.
Okay. Moving right along on our new business. I'd like to have approval of salary increases and bonuses. And before that, we'd like to maybe have a big discussion from our chair. I mean, from the executive director.
Are we going to air to the second closed session?
Yeah, we'll table this until we come back after closed session.
Okay, we'll table. We'll table that. Well, we'll go with the executive office report.
All right. So first, we are going to have a presentation from Joe Trotter from CU Health, or CU Public Health, as we are looking at the distribution of Narcan in our standard buildings. Katie and our LSS department brought to us the possibility of partnering with CU Public Health, and I asked Joe to come and present to our board so we can all have a better understanding of what Narcan is and how we can help with their overdoses and our problems. Joe, come on up.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So my name is Joe Trotter. I'm the Harm Reduction Program Coordinator for -- oh, my slide is not in the right order. That's okay. So I'm the Harm Reduction Program Coordinator for Champagne County Public Health. I've been working in the harm reduction field for about 16 years now. Part of the intention of this program is to provide Narcan, the medication that's used to reverse an opiate overdose, as well as Narcan trainings that are made available to the public. So I have just a few things that I want to present to with. I know I don't have a whole ton of time, so I'm trying to be brief. So when we're talking about Narcan and overdoses, this is specifically for opiates, which are forms of pain relievers that are very commonly used. There are various forms that are out there, but the body responds to them all in the same way. The risk that comes with opiates is the body can slow down so much from taking them that it becomes so suppressed if someone uses more than they can handle at that particular moment, and that's what causes an opiate overdose. It's in the news a lot. There's a lot of media attention around it. And what has been developed, and what we have found to be very effective, is increasing the distribution of Narcan in a population, and I'll talk some more about that here. So when I'm talking about opiates, it's going to be any kind of drug or medication that's on this list right here. I don't know what is up with my slide. Oh, that's it. Okay. So we're going to talk about opiates. We're going to talk about what overdose Narcan is, and then what the response looks like about our program. Okay, my slides are not in any order at all. Okay. That's totally fine. I can figure it out. In a second. Okay. So opiates are similar, and there are similarities with them, but there are differences in them. Some opiates are stronger than others, some last longer than others, some have a higher amount of potency. The thing that we're seeing, though, is when drugs are given out through a pharmacy, we know how strong they are. But when drugs are given out on the street, or purchased, or distributed through other means, we often don't know how strong we are. There's a lot of variation in the amount of drug. So someone might be taking a pill that they think is OxyContin or Demerol or something like that, and they find that it's been altered with or cut with. Fentanyl is on this list. Fentanyl is a very powerful opiate that we see out on the street. It's related to a lot of overdoses that we see now. Fentanyl has kind of been added to drugs that we see on the street. It's become very, very common. So because of how strong all of these opiates are, there's a risk that someone can develop chemical dependence. So very, very basically, what happens is the opiate gets introduced into our brains, and our brains have this specific receptor that the opiates like, and it hits that particular receptor, and it sends sensations of suppression or pain relief to the body. This is the opiate doing its job. This is the brain doing its job. Everything's functioning as it should. The issue with opiates is they will cause then more receptors to get built up or created inside the brain. And then if there are more opiates present, they will find those additional receptors, they will fill them, and that causes then increased sensation of suppression and pain relief. Again, the drug is doing what it's supposed to, the body is doing what it's supposed to. We get those increased sensations of pain relief, which causes the euphoric feelings of using opiates. People don't use opiates because they don't feel good. People use opiates because they feel good. That's what they're intended for. The problem, though, is that when the drug wears out, the prescription runs out, or people are not able to purchase or find any, we have these receptors that are built up. And when the receptors are not filled, when they've become accustomed to being filled, they will begin to do the opposite sensation. They will send negative pulses into the brain. Well, that means if none of the receptors have been filled or taken care of, they will all combine then and send negative pulses into the brain. And this is what we call withdrawal. So opiate withdrawal syndrome is a real syndrome that people feel when they have been using opiates for a period of time and they have to stop for whatever reason. I have a slide here somewhere for it. Bear with me. Hey, everybody. So this is a long list of symptoms that somebody can feel when their body has been using opiates for a period of time and they stop using. These are all terrible symptoms in any kind of combination. When people haven't been using opiates for very long, the symptoms are usually mild. But when people have been using opiates for a real long time, the symptoms are very strong, they're very powerful, and they're very debilitating. So this causes a system where the drug wires the brain to want to use the drug, often to avoid being sick. And because of the difficulty that we have in the U.S. of getting into drug treatment, of staying in drug treatment, and paying for drug treatment, we have a lot of people that are chemically dependent on opiates that need to use them routinely in order to avoid feeling sick. If they avoid feeling sick, then they can do their jobs, they can take care of their family, they can take care of their kids. So we see a lot of people, and we service a lot of people that are in this stage of drug use. They're using, they're maintaining, they're trying to get their work done, they're trying to take care of their family, trying to take care of their kids while managing a chemical dependence on a drug. The problem with opiates is that sometimes somebody can use more drug than they can handle at a particular moment, and that's what we call an overdose. Somewhere in here. So an overdose is simply, my tolerance is at a certain point, and I've used more than my tolerance can handle at that particular moment. And there's a few major risk factors that we know of for why that happens. Anytime an opiate's combined with another drug or alcohol, that greatly increases the chance of either increasing the potency of the drug or reducing someone's tolerance to that drug, with alcohol being a really good example. Let's say someone takes, you know, Vicodin at night to help them sleep because they have back pain. Really common kind of way to use Vicodin in back pain. But in this particular example, the person uses or drinks alcohol that night, has a few beers with dinner, they don't realize that the alcohol is going to lower their tolerance, which means that the opiate is going to be stronger, which increases the chances that they can overdose when they use it. We also see overdoses when there's a new batch of opiates. Not talking about drugs that come into the pharmacy, but drugs that are purchased outside of the street or purchased from other people. When drugs come through illegal channels, they're often tampered with, cut with, which means that usually when it reaches our area, it's weaker than people expect. But sometimes there can be major fluctuations, which means sometimes a batch of drugs may come in that's much stronger than people are used to, and we see some over overdoses when that happens. Not always, but sometimes we do see overdoses like that. And then most times when we see overdoses are when people have periods of reduced tolerance. Hopefully, it's the next slide. It's in here somewhere. All right. So reduced tolerance really just means that the body is -- they haven't used opiates for a while. And when they have used opiates for a while, when they go back and use again, there's a great risk that the amount that they go back to and use again will be more than they can tolerate. So we see that when people are leaving jails, when they're leaving drug treatment, when they just haven't been able to find or purchase the drug that they want to use. So you go to jail, most people are in jail for three days, your tolerance goes down, you go out and buy the same amount that you used before, your body is not accustomed to that anymore, just after three days of not using. Greatly increases the chances of overdose. So one of the best ways to stop an overdose is calling 911. Now, there are plenty of challenges that come to not calling 911. Not everyone wants to pay for an ambulance bill. Not everyone enjoys having the police at their house. So we need other options. Another great option is rescue breathing. We were kidding, we're really good at this, and then this whole thing popped up called COVID-19. I don't know if anybody heard about that, but this made it much scarier for people to want to do rescue breathing on their friends and family members. We generally don't like putting our faces on each other to help someone breathe. So we have these two kind of challenges when it comes to preventing an overdose, and then one of the last things that we can do is put Narcan in someone. Now, any of these will work. You can call 911, and that still gives someone a really good chance of survival. You could do rescue breathing, and that gives someone a good chance of survival. And you can put Narcan in them, that gives them a good chance of survival, but the more of these you can do, the better. But the problem with these three priorities is that you can't do any of these by yourself. When someone is overdosing, their body slows down and becomes so suppressed, so slow, that they're not going to be able to call for help. They're not going to be able to pick up a phone. Obviously, they can't do rescue breathing on themselves, and they're not going to be able to put Narcan in themselves. They need a bystander. They need someone nearby that can intercede on their behalf. So the data tells us that the more Narcan that we supply out to a community, the less death we have. So if we have more people ready and able to have a kit of Narcan, who know how to use it, and that can give it to someone who is overdosing, the greater chances that that person has to survive that overdose. So Narcan, it's been around for a really long time. It's also called naloxone. All it does is just block opiates. It's very, very safe. All it does is find those receptors that I talked about earlier and just covers over them, and it doesn't allow the drug to pass through. It's completely non-toxic. You don't get addicted to it. People don't use it on the street for fun. It has no recreational purposes for it. It's inert, basically. It's like water. It only works if someone has opiates in them, which means that if someone, you know, you come across someone that is unconscious, one, you're not going to be able to say like, "What drugs did you take today?" "What's been going on with you?" But you're not going to know if it's a heart attack, or a stroke, or a seizure, or what have you. But it doesn't matter with the case of Narcan. With Narcan, you can put it in anyone, and no matter what their medical condition, it will not make their medical condition any worse. So you can put it in someone who's having a heart attack, which might not work. Okay? And in Illinois, they have now changed the laws, which allows anyone in Illinois to carry and administer Narcan on anyone at any time for any reason. And this is a really, really good change for Illinois. It used to be you had to get it from a pharmacy, or a doctor, or a program like ours. Now you can buy it at the counter. You can get it from our program at no cost. The idea is we need to remove as many barriers for people to have access to this life-saving medication. So that's the intention around the law, and this has been a very good change for Illinois. This is the most common form of Narcan, like kind of five or six years ago, an injectable type of Narcan, but people don't like needles. So they have developed a nasal type of Narcan, and this is the most common kind that we give out. So it's just like any kind of sinus spray, like an Afrin or anything like this. The device just, the plunger goes into the nostril, the contents get sprayed, the Narcan gets administered into the nasal cavity, and it works if there's opiates present. If there's no opiates present, nothing else happens. So this is the common device, the most common device that we give out right now. I talked about how the Narcan finds those receptors, all this just blocks them, prevents the opiates from doing what they need to do. We need Narcan deployed, usually when the drug is first consumed, that's when the overdose happens, so we need it done initially when that person is experiencing the overdose. They don't need it hours later, they need it immediately. The data tells us with most overdoses, we have anywhere from 10 minutes to two minutes' worth of air, so we don't have a whole lot of time. So when people wake up, they're going to wake up usually feeling groggy, confused. We have put them in withdrawal state. They might be agitated, but that's about it. People don't wake up screaming, they don't jump out a window, they don't do anything more than just being confused and agitated and put into this withdrawal state. So the risk to the individual upon waking up is very, very low. Let's see. So Narcan only lasts about 30 minutes, so it's meant to be short-term, short-acting. Again, it's used for this emergency. So an overdose is an emergency, it needs to be used in the emergency. We instruct people that, you know, if someone is waking up, or they're not able to stand or walk or talk, it could be some other medical condition for sure. We need to get them to a hospital if that point happens, and we need someone to stick around with them for a little bit after they've been revived, just to support them. We do have a little bit of Narcan storage concerns. Can't get too hot, can't get too cold. It needs to stay in whatever kit is given to. Needs to stay room temperature. I'll speed to the last of this. We have a 10-county region in Illinois that our program covers. We collaborate with a lot of other health departments and agencies in the area. Primarily, we give Narcan, we train people on Narcan, the people that use opiates are the number-one people at risk. But the group that we're really targeting now is the people that know people who use drugs, because they're going to be the ones most likely to be that bystander if they are experiencing an overdose. We need someone nearby them that can act as a bystander to call 911, to put Narcan in them, to possibly do rescue breathing. So that's the intention with this, is that we want to be able to offer both education and kits of Narcan to folks. And thanks to Katie for kind of pointing out this opportunity that might be a real good possibility here. That's me. If you have any other questions, I don't know if we can take questions out. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. Sorry to get into my slides.
Yes. How many people are overdosing in this stuff in the city?
We don't have great data on that. I know in 2023, we had around 50 deaths related to drugs, related to drug overdoses. Or more than 15.
You said that Narcan only used for opiates?
Right.
What about the people on heroin? Do you use that stuff for them too?
Yep, yep. Heroin's an opiate, so if it's in the opiate family, it'll work for them.
Oh, okay. I was wondering, because you said you're going to distribute those cans of that stuff. Where are you going to put it? Who are you going to give it to?
I missed a question.
You said you're going to give cans of that stuff to people in the community?
Mm-hmm.
So what, they can just go down and pick it up? I'm just saying that because you don't know who might be using this stuff.
Yeah, so with Narcan, the idea is I'm taking this kit of Narcan, not for myself, but because I don't know who else I'm going to be nearby that might use an opiate, so I need to be ready in case that happens.
That's like, almost like using something, what is that thing that you use in danger when you're walking around?
Like an EpiPen or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the data also tells us that nationally, overdoses are up about 10%. Our data shows that we're no different than the rest of the country. So overdoses are up everywhere.
Can you just answer my question now, but I'll ask it again? You said you had 50 associated with this last year. What about the previous years with?
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I believe we had 45 in 2022. 2021, I think it was a real bad year. I think we had maybe 60-plus that year. So we went up, we went down a little bit, seemed to be going back up again.
How does that compare with the surrounding counties? Do you have any statistics on that?
Yeah, so part of that has to do with the amount of population. So when you have more population, you usually have more of everything. So the surrounding counties right here, both Champaign County and Vermillion County are both medium-risk in overdose risk compared to a lot of the other surrounding counties around us. It's when you get up to more major metropolitaries, Peoria, Kankakee, Chicago, obviously, just because of how dense the population is. So we are comparable for, we are considered medium risk for the size of our population
I would say to the board, specifically as it relates to our properties, I mean, it's no secret that we've had overdoses in our properties. And so to be able to bring this, first off, resident education, educating our residents on opiate overdoses and the distribution of Narcan and how it can save lives, we're hoping to see some positive impacts in the buildings. Are there any other questions from the board?
We do classes.
Yeah, so we do a variety of different types of educations. So one thing that we've kind of proposed is having kind of like small group classes. People could come in, they can get educated about what an overdose is, how to use Narcan, how to respond appropriately. We also do, but we're not required to do classes, so we can also just say, hey, here you go, take some, because the medication's so easy to use. But we do offer education classes.
How sad of being used to somebody invite you somewhere?
All the time. Yep, yep.
I was wondering what you gave to give, like, was a property building, was it great to give every person in a property building, the kind of that stuff?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah, one great thing about our program is we don't even actually buy the Narcan. We just tell the state, and they send us pounds. So they've made it really, really easy for us to get a lot of Narcan out into the community. That's the intention. So a lot of people think like, oh, I don't want Narcan because I don't want to take it from someone else that needs it. Right now, the data tells us everybody needs it. So even if someone's like, I don't know anyone that uses drugs, it doesn't matter. You might be nearby someone that uses drugs, and, you know, overdoses are not planned. No one goes into using a drug thinking, this is the one that's going to knock me out. That's never a planned choice that someone's having. They're considered accidents, they're considered unintentional from a public health perspective. It's an accident, it's a health risk, it's an emergency, and it needs to be treated as such.
Yeah, expiration date, where they no longer effective?
Yeah, it's usually a couple of years after their purchase. I think the kits we have right now expire in 2026. So yeah, usually we have a real long shelf life for them. And we are happy to replace any kits that have expired, as long as the state's being for them.
And for everybody's perspective, this isn't just a low-income housing problem, you know? I'll give you my perspective. I was in the hospital in July and was prescribed a very heavy dose of fentanyl. And before they gave it to me, they taught me how to use Narcan. They made me take it home with me, and when I got the prescription, I hadn't taken it home with me. And the process then of going from there to where I am now, which was reducing my prescription to nothing, I haven't had fentanyl in three weeks now at all, and yet I still feel a slight addiction to it, you know? So I mean, it's something that stays with you, and you can, I now have a much better understanding about how these kinds of addictions can grow in people that don't have an intention at all, that think they can handle it, let's put it that way.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, and I think that's a good way to clarify chemical dependence is, yeah, you used it in three weeks, but you still feel like something's missing. That is the chemical dependence piece of opiates that's very, very specific to opiates. Cocaine doesn't do this, marijuana doesn't do this, alcohol doesn't do this, not in the same kind of speed and severity that opiates do.
And the withdrawal for me was agitation like a caffeine high, you know? So I mean, and I took my dose from here, and gradually, every two weeks, brought it down, brought it down, brought it down, until it was nothing, right? But even when it was nothing, it felt like I had drank, I'd spent too much time at Starbucks that day. And couldn't sleep at night, you know?
Is there any effort to, like, I know there's been a push to get AEDs in lots of locations. Is there an effort to just like have Narcan, like, you know that you can walk into the front door at the housing authority and be like, they have some Narcan at the front desk?
Yeah, and there is effort to just kind of like cast this wide net right now. There was an law that was passed in January to, but they want all schools to have Narcan on hand, and we're helping schools get trained and have kits available to that. But yeah, it is kind of turning into, and we tell the schools, put it with your AED, put it with your first aid kits. So yeah, it has become kind of a, we just kind of need it everywhere.
Is there an age limit on that stuff?
No. There's no age limit on it. It works on everybody.
Thank you so much.
And feel free to contact me if you have more questions or, thank you.
Thank you, Katie, for connecting us. Now, we are ready to have Jennifer come up, and we're just kind of going to give the board an overview of operations from 2023, things that we accomplished, and we also have a list of accomplishments for 2023 in front of the board, a few considerations as well. But it was a couple of things we wanted to highlight and touch on for 2023. Jennifer, send it to us, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. So 2023, HCC is very busy. We hired 21 staff members. We created three new job positions, and we promoted four staff members to new positions. I'm going to give a brief overview of the HCB department, having its voucher. The agency has made significant progress this year towards recent activities. We concluded the year being 98% utilized with our half. We do want to spend more attention this year toward our voucher utilization. And so the department is really increasing landlord outreach. That's kind of the area where we're focusing on is more engagement with landlords, more education for the landlords, and the department or the team has been attending different workshops, we've been hosting landlord events here once a month. They've also been going to different real estate, real estate meetings, and just informing more landlords about the agency, about the voucher program, and again, just educating more landlords. We currently, at the end of last year, had 1,856 families on the HCB waiting list. We had about 208 families actively searching for vouchers, and 149 families admitted to the program for the voucher program. The property management team has really increased efforts by hiring a maintenance supervisor, and we've been defining the roles of maintenance tech 1 and 2. We have some challenges with overturn, so we often ask if you know someone who might be a good fit for maintenance, please send them our way. We are actively hiring. We've been, we sent our property We've been, uh, we sent our property managers to low income tax credit. Um, they've taken, uh, property management courses to gain more knowledge in their role. And we've, um, started more efforts to have the finance team and the property management team work closer together so that they can better understand rent rolls, um, evictions and the weekly rents. And the property management team ended the year at 90% utilization. We have quite a few development projects underway. Uh, we were awarded a 9% tax credit, um, for the renovation of Stair Place. Uh, we are scheduled to close around March, uh, with renovations following. We will be providing assistance to families, um, to relocate. And that relocation is literally just relocating in the building. We are required to offer families the voucher, but they are not required to take the voucher. It's just a requirement for that being a Rad property. So if the families choose not to take the voucher, we will be assisting them with moving from one unit to the other while those units are undergoing repair.
I want to clarify, um, at our December board meeting, we did have a ready to come. And I do want to clarify to the board that, uh, and to the public that there were no, uh, no communication regarding a required, uh, move has been sent out to residents. Um, we haven't sent out anything yet. Um, any relocations will happen internally within the building. And like Jennifer said, we'll offer them the voucher if they choose to move, but we are not requiring that they leave the building.
Maple Grove, this is a project that we're in partnership with RPC. We're undergoing a renovation and rehab project. This is an emergency, um, shelter. And we are, uh, we moved a few families from that project to our project based, um, property at Oakwood Trace. And so, um, we should be in, um, undergoing those renovations, um, hopefully by March of this year.
And then these renovations for Maple Grove, sorry, I'm going to go ahead.
Thank you.
These renovations are going to be, well, they're hopefully a hundred percent, but most of the renovations are covered through grants that we received from the county and from the city. Um, so if the renovation in total will be about, um, 1.3 million dollars and we're anticipating to cover a big chunk of that, uh, through grants that was received last year.
We're also in the process of hopefully acquiring Homestead. It's a my rehab project that currently houses 25 units. Um, our goal is to project based these units, uh, to add more families to the program and help to increase our utilization. Um, we have dedicated four homes for the housing participants involved in the VACOR grant. Uh, we're working closely with IDA to utilize the funds from the grant, um, to purchase these homes. And we have completed the, uh, Youth Field Urbana site, allowing for, um, space for that program to grow. And we're hoping to have completion of the Pioneer site by November, February, March. A few partnerships and collaborations that I did, I want to see you kind of highlight was, um, our increased involvement with RPC. Uh, we just, we had a monthly meeting to discuss, um, different property acquisitions, um, emergency shelter, just more, um, discussions on how we can, um, acquire property, um, rehab property to just really increase, um, options for, uh, our families who are searching for homes. The Housing Choice voucher program has worked with, um, Royson, Brinkmeyer, and a few other property managers that haven't traditionally accepted our families with vouchers. And so, um, they've really been making a lot of strides in that area, not just housing, but housing and higher opportunity areas to give families more opportunities, um, for housing. So, um, that's been a pretty big partnership as well. And internally, we've been doing a lot more, um, engagement with our HUD field office and our, uh, finance staff at HUD. Um, I think that the ongoing meetings that we've had have really given the directors more understanding of the finance, the budget, how we allocate funds. And it's really been a good opportunity for us to be transparent with HUD. We kind of go over what our plans are and for them to kind of give us feedback as we're implementing these different opportunities. Community outreach and engagement. So, um, this year or last year, we did move some of our team members to Oakwood Trace apartments. Um, I think it's been quite an impact on the community to have staff presence there. Uh, last year, activity included 44 workshops hosted by the team, 11 events that they hosted and 14 community outreach events that they attended.
Okay, sorry. I would say that, you know, having the, the LSS team be present at Oakwood Trace, I know it was something new and it was a challenge, but we have absolutely seen a change in, uh, the community there. Um, we've made a lot of investments, we went out and got grants, saw the Victory Over Violence Grants for $33,000, we were able to get ring doorbells over there, also upgraded the lights and cameras. And so we've seen the investment, not only in staff time, but also in, you know, dollars and funding there has really made a difference. Over the summer, there was a, a huge decrease in violent criminal activity on the property. And so I think that, you know, combined all of the efforts that LSS has, has put in, um, into improving, uh, the community over there has been amazing.
And they've been really instrumental in the issuing of some of our special vouchers, our entry vouchers, our Illinois commitment vouchers. Um, and let me see. They've also been providing assistance to, um, our small business owners. Uh, last year, the team assisted four small business owners, nine individuals with workforce development by providing laptops and tuition. And we also provided assistance to one family for a home closure. Um, a few plan changes that we did make, um, I know we discussed that through the meetings, but the eight year term limit, we did revisit that. Um, at the end of last year, we were close to having some 200 families who would have turned out, um, being terminated from the program. So we discussed and we kind of revised that, so, um, we're introducing a tiered system, um, but not terminating the families from the program. Uh, we're also looking to adopt small area FMRs, uh, which will allow us to increase our payment standards, um, to be more competitive in the area. And we're also introducing flat utility allowances to kind of accommodate for some of the rising cost of, um, utilities.
And then, um, the eight year term limit, we did send out a notice to all community members and, um, all voucher holders, uh, earlier this month about us, uh, putting a pause on the eight year term limit while we take some time to review our policies. Um, for the most part, we have received a lot of positive feedback about the change. Um, and, uh, we think that it, you know, is going to have a good impact on the community overall. I want to be clear that our goal is not to continue to push people towards self-sufficiency because we do want to do that. It just was not, um, the best or the, the best idea for us to do, um, at this point in time, looking at the economy, um, the housing market, um, but then also looking at the impact, the administrative impact that it would have on the housing authority.
I'm glad you did that. Well, what is a tier, you're looking to tier?
We're looking at like a tiered, um, like so, once people reach that eight year term, once they reach eight years of assistance, that they have to be at a minimum income. Um, and so it's more along that line, like lines of trying to keep them confined and keep their income increasing, um, and instead of kicking them off the program, really just trying to stay alive families at the eight year mark.
Did you put a maximum limit on that or you just?
You said, do you put a maximum?
Did you put a maximum limit on the years or you just?
We have a, a minimum income of once you reach eight years. And so there is a tier, there are tiering up to, we've always had kind of like a tier up system. You know, per each year, you have a certain amount of hours worth of income earned. Um, but now we're making that set up to eight, at the eight year mark, instead of kicking people off the program, that they have to be at a minimum income. And the income has to be maintained, if they can maintain their income, they're, it's going to be adjusted if it goes down. They still have to figure out a way. And so our team is always, of course, working with families to connect them with resources for employment or, or, uh, school or anything like that, to help them push towards self-sufficiency. And our program has proved to be, uh, very successful in that aspect. We keep families employed, we keep them in school, uh, and compliant with our rules. Um, just kind of looking at, uh, the impact that terminating voucher assistance for 200 people would have, uh, at this present moment.
Pretty bad hardship, not only that, um, those people are eligible for assistance. Who are you going to do that? What you doing, what you doing, that's a great thing, how is it?
So you're using your term more as an evaluation?
More, the eight year, more is like a, um, it's like a stock in play, I guess.
Yeah, but I'm talking after eight years, you go through and evaluate, then you give them two more years.
Not quite, there's no cap now.
No cap, no, okay, that's possible, yeah.
Yeah, and, and not to say that there won't be, but at this time, we're just talking, no, not going to.
And so we, we will again revisit our policies, you know, over this, over the course of this year and possibly next year, and reevaluate like what our, what a limit on assistance may look like. But at this time, we're not, uh, putting in place any policies around it outside of a minimum income eight years.
Okay, and so some of the, um, the bigger technology innovation changes to 2023, um, really is working with, um, software providers to change and upgrade our website. Um, we're looking for a, looking to create a website that's more user friendly for, uh, residents, but also for staff to make updates as needed. We've been also discussing with, um, two software vendors, Yardi and MRI, um, to look for a, a plan that will kind of help our staff better with, um, software. And at RAR Reports, this is where we keep all of our, our database, so all of our tenant files, all of our financials, so we're just kind of, uh, reviewing the different, different options that those software companies have to provide. Um, and we also did do our upgrading security cameras at Washington Square at Oakwood Trace, um, along with the lighting project at Oakwood Trace. The projects have started, um, we have some pickups with the weather. They kind of were halted, but we're looking to resume that project and completing the, uh, lighting project over at Oakwood Trace. Last year, HCC had an independent audit, which resulted in no findings or recommendation to the board. Um, last year, we greatly invested in staff development. Um, we sent those staff on five day trainings, we hosted trainings onsite, Rad PDB, low income tax credit, um, the executive director education program, HCB financial management, and quite a few other, um, a few other trainings. Um, we've also implemented key performance indicators to ensure that we're complying with the HCB MTW program. So we're increasing our file reviews, inspection quality control, MT, MTW requirement review, and project based regulatory compliance. Um, the directors and our compliance analysts have been attending trainings from last year that will continue onto this year, um, just to make sure that the team is ready for a lot of those hot, uh, Inspire changes that are to come. And lastly, just a few goals for 2024. Um, we're looking to continue to increase leasing for, uh, both the project base and the, um, Housing Choice vouchers. Um, we're also looking to, uh, bring some onsite training for our maintenance team, um, and some de-escalation training for our staff. Uh, we're looking to do more partnerships with Champagne PD and Urbana PD for increased security measures at Stair Place and Washington Square. Uh, security's been an issue at those sites and so we're hoping to, um, develop some stronger partnerships with the police, um, department in those areas. Um, we're open to electronic filing system, just looking for ways to be more efficient in our day to day, um, tasks, ways to help families, um, upload documents so they don't necessarily have to come into the office, um, be able to schedule appointments with staff, um, just kind of a lot more user friendly, um, ways to continue to communicate with our residents. Um, we are looking to implement the Illinois Debt Recovery Program and that's to help the agency recover unreported income. And again, we're looking to, uh, prepare the administrative plan for upcoming changes to Hotma Hip and Inspire. Those are going to be ongoing changes HUD isn't quite ready for us to implement, but, um, they are requesting that we get those changes updated in our administrative plan this year. So, um, we're looking to do that and just kind of schedule ongoing training for our staff. We have a lot of changes coming from HUD this year and, uh, more than likely into 2025. And so we'll be doing a lot more trainings and just trying to stay ahead of the game and be proactive.
This is awesome. She can interrupt me.
My question, um, you said that maintenance was a turnover, you need more people, we know somebody. Uh, we can't use any of the kids from the youth field to train them at the maintenance?
Do through that, through our internship program, um, through the internship program, we do try to pull on youth field students and, and get them trained, um, to work in all the properties.
Exactly, we do good. Connection that we're over, since it's been a little bit of turnover.
We do do that. Um, I also added to Jennifer's slides that, um, in 2023, we, um, had done some, uh, um, historical corrections to our VMS, um, so we really identified some areas where we were underreporting. Uh, so that was going to take, increase our cash flow. Um, and then we obligated and committed our reserve dollars. I know we've talked about in the past about how we have, um, not only us, but a lot of MTWs have massive reserves that HUD has his eyes on, um, and wants us to spin down. So we've identified and obligated and committed funds, uh, from our reserves, uh, to be able to spin down some of those funds. Um, and we began developing plans on developments and, uh, different initiatives and things like that that we want to, um, to do to help us, uh, balance out our spending and spend more money, um, so we don't, uh, be a burden on HUD with our, with our reserves.
I'd like to make a couple of comments brief. Uh, I think it's really great that, uh, we have a good rapport and collaboration with RPC and HUD field office. I know in the past years, uh, if you heard from field office, of course, maybe even in some cases RPC, there might be a rare flag here or something like that, but, but I just think that a tribute to, you know, the administrative team, uh, that's, that's presently, you know, serving here and the different core, uh, core, uh, core values that we have with regards to our educational component, administrative component, and the maintenance that you just added. I think all three of those are, are worthy of, uh, of, uh, outstanding performance. And I, I can see a lot of value in, in, in the training. I think you got a couple of people going to Austin, Texas, I believe.
Yeah, for the light pick.
And I think, you know, you get these positive results because it comes from having exposure and going to training sessions and, and, and bringing back those ideas and, and implementing them. So I just think that's really, really valuable to the success of the total operation for, for our housing agency. And it speaks very, very well as, as in some of the material here. Uh, you don't get those results without having people that are in those, uh, positions to bring forth the contributions and the, and the success that are. So I say keep up the good work. It's reflected, uh, nationally as well as, uh, within the state. I think a lot of people, uh, are looking to this agency is, you know, hey, come here, come there. So keep up the good work and appreciate you as well.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Um, I would say like last year was, we had a whirlwind every year last year, a lot of changes. Um, but overall, I think the team really came together, um, and really, uh, you know, made a, made the year out to be a really great one. So I just wanted to send a shout out to the entire HCC team and their hard work in 2023. All right, next slide. And we have our employee of the month. Employee of the month this month is Ryan Jolts. And, uh, the blurb on Ryan says, HCC proudly selects Ryan Jolts as the champion of the month, recognizing his unwavering commitment to excellence and his consistent efforts as an outstanding employee. Ryan has consistently demonstrated a remarkable work ethic, consistently going above and beyond in his role, his dedication to his responsibilities and his willingness to lend a helping hand, make him more, make him a standout as an exemplary team member. Moreover, Ryan's exceptional ability to remain composed and work well under pressure during challenging situations showcases his leadership qualities. His willingness to step up during critical moments underscores his deserving nature for champion of the month. Congratulations to Ryan for his outstanding contributions as well as, as a well deserved acknowledgement. So wish you well.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I think everything was spoken there. Um, Ryan is, he's, he's awesome. Um, and there's been lots of days when, you know, our team was struggling or, you know, getting ready for graduation and things of that sort, and I would just look at Ryan, he would just be like a goose. Thank you, that's, that's what I need to see. So Ryan, thank you for being a member of our team and, you know, um, I love you. So Ryan, thank you for being a member of our team, and, you know, I love you.
Ryan, would you like to say anything?
Thanks, everybody.
I have to say that Ryan being selected as employee of the month is well overdue. You have, I mean, I really, really wanted you to be employee of the month this month, but you deserved it many months prior to this. But specifically Ryan's, we had an incident, a very challenging incident during graduation. And Ryan really stepped up to the plate. He showed extreme leadership, compassion, and care for everybody in the room. And he just, he kept things going, he kept everybody safe, everybody focused, everybody calm. And we appreciate you, Ryan, and he's always playing in the background. But I want you to get your recognition today, so thank you for everything you do. So we will continue, we had our all-staff holiday bash in December. I had Jupiter's, it was really nice, my first time kind of going to Jupiter. So the staff really enjoyed that, we had a buffet, we did a little small training. So that was really, a really cool event. The details on it, Dr. Henry showed up, and everybody on the leadership team and me, on the leadership team gave a presentation of about two to three minutes, really explaining what they do, really working on making sure that everybody understands the entire operations of the agency, and that each team understands how their role supports the overall operation of the authority. We also had a visit from our state rep, Nikki Wazinski, our United States Congresswoman. And so it was really cool, she got to come in and talk to the youth bill students. She participated in the bill, she screwed a few, uh, screws in a, they were working on a framing project. And so I think she had fun with it, she got to put on a hard hat, do Q and A with the students. So it was really nice to have her come out and see what the youth bill program is doing and have her support and continue advocacy around the Department of Labor providing funding to youth bill. We also had our first homeownership recipient in 2023. We did create a down payment assistance that was separate from our Habitat for Humanity assistance that we offer, and so it took us all year. But in December, we finally got to move somebody to homeownership, and we provided Ms. Taysha Carol with a $15,000 check. So she has graduated our program and purchased a home, and she was able to use down payment assistance from the Housing Authority to do so. We all, well, quite a few of us attended the FADA conference in San Diego. And so just wanted to send a shout out to the board. I know we learned a lot, we came back with a lot of new ideas and initiatives. And then on the next slide, I did participate in the New ED Roundtable. That was really nice, I got asked to do that. And so I was able to share some experience of being a new ED and some of the challenges that we faced as we take on new roles. And then I also was able to present on some of our policies. And so that was a really cool presentation, it was pretty well attended there. And then on the next slide.
Excuse me, Ms. Walker.
Yes.
And you were excellent.
Thank you.
We are proud of you, RIC.
Thank you. We also are launching today, hopefully Jean, a new website. So I'm going to let Jean walk through some of the logistics of our new website. She has worked so hard on getting this website up and running, but it is very user-friendly, and we love it.
I wasn't prepared to talk. So we still have several pages that we need to do some updates to, that we've got coming soon. Eventually, we're going to be able to, people will be able to schedule appointments with staff members. And it'll integrate with their current calendars within their Outlook email. So we've just moved over most, most of the content from the old website to the new, but it's just, it's a lot easier to navigate through this, it looks a lot better. We've made a lot of changes for ADA accessibility for people with vision problems. And we've got for like our waitlist, here's people a number that they can call to see where they are on the waitlist and which waits they're actually on. What else can we show? So we just actually started building the youth bill piece, so I just kind of named it, "What is Youth Bill?" And just gives them just a brief explanation of what it is. And it's everything that we've moved over from the previous website.
And it'll have this, it's what's called an identity module. And so youth bill will pretty much, like, youth bill will be able to put their application online and it'll be, it'll be more tailored to them kind of having their own little miniature website within the Housing Authority website, where they can add multiple models to it.
So people can apply, kids can apply to youth bill?
Yes.
That's a good idea, that way.
Eventually, it'll be that way. We do have our, our calendar set up pretty much for the year with all of our holidays already set up, and then we'll add, actually, I think I did add board meetings. Yeah, they're on there. And we'll be adding content as we get, I really wanted to add some more this morning, but because of some technical issues, I spent like four hours on the phone trying to get this up and running, so, but it looks really good. I'm really actually pretty excited to work with because it's very easy to add content. But if you have any questions, or, I'm hoping by the time I get back to my office, I'll have an email saying it's live, so, and I actually think it is.
No, it is, I looked at it before I could am.
Okay, well, we were supposed to be live, but not technically live, because they wanted to check a few things in the background to make sure that were no issues. So we weren't supposed to really tell anybody yet, but it, it probably is good to go now, so.
So would you go back to the homepage, Jean?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, it's live. So what, what we love most about the website is it's very user-friendly, both for us as well as our clients and the population we serve. Though our previous website was very aesthetically pleasing, it was hard to navigate, it had a lot of pages. We constantly got calls asking like, "How do I, where do I?" So this is a lot easier, it's a lot easier to target things. One of some of the features I love the most about it are we, is definitely the scheduling appointments with staff. We believe that this is something that is going to really simplify communication internally as well as externally with our clients and community members. One of the biggest complaints I always hear is they can't get in contact with staff, or people are trying to make appointments, and so this will really simplify that process. They can schedule appointments online with their caseworkers, property management staff. And so we're excited about that. And I also wanted to, can you like scroll over the photos? Oh, never, no, not that.
Which one are you on?
Oh, these ones. You mean those?
Yeah, I also wanted to send a shout out to Matt DeFonex, who is Kay's brother actually, who provided us with some really nice photos for Champagne County. This is one of those that he provided, and so he did that service project for us, and so it was really nice. Thank you, too.
I would like to, could you stand up? You know, I just wanted to say that on behalf of myself and this board, what a vital role you play and have played for, for many, many years. And your role is so critical to the success of this operation. And I just wanted to give you publicly a thank you. And we wouldn't be where we are without your skills and your technology background and the body of work you play, and I just wanted to say thank you on campus board.
Well, thank you, I really.
I wanted to add something to that, I just was playing, playing around with it on my phone. The mobile accessibility is incredible.
Yes.
And that is what, you know, how we're going to measure ourselves here in the next 10 years, is how accessible are we on people's phones? Boy, it's, it's a really great site, you did an awesome job.
We're very excited about it. And then lastly, I wanted to let the board know that we did host our graduation ceremony on January 13th. I did send out an email, but our graduation ceremony was cut short. We had a verbal altercation that escalated into a gun drawn situation. And so unfortunately, our young people did not get the commencement ceremony that they deserved. We did have to end the ceremony early. But we have, the staff has worked, you know, this week or last week when we came back, came back off of graduation. We worked up an internal plan to, number one, address future, future events, and how we're going to go about those things. And so we'll be distributing a plan out to the board as far as how we're going to host and conduct future ceremonies or any events in general. But also how we're going to make it up to our graduates, because their ceremony was cut short. And so we have been in the planning stages, so we're looking at a date, February 7th. And I will provide the board additional details about the event. But Senator Paul Faraci has graciously offered to support and help sponsor a dinner for our youth bill graduates and their families to try to rectify what happened during the graduation ceremony. And so I'll be sending the board out, we have a plan, I don't want to say it publicly because it'll be a smaller event, but we will send out information to the board if they would like to be, if I would like to be a penance, while we try to celebrate our graduates once more. Outside of that, youth bill hosted an informational on Tuesday that had over 75 young people in the community. And when Joby told us how many people were coming, we just kind of like blew a lot like, hey, Joby. But we had 75 young people come through our doors on Tuesday to try to figure out how they can join the youth bill program. And it's exciting for us, but it's also really scary to know that there are 75 young people who, whose education and whose future is uncertain. And so, you know, the growth of our program is wonderful, and we want to, you know, reach out and try to help as many of them as we can, but we're not going to be able to help them all. But I wanted to just share that number with the board, so, you know, we all understand, you know, how critical the work that we do in youth bill is. To have 75 young people show up, I mean, this room was packed after, after the event. I'm like, oh my goodness, like it was mind-blowing to see that many young adults.
With the 75, even if you accommodate some of them, could another one be on the waitlist to come?
Yeah, we always have a waitlist. Our waitlist in the past has been about, you know, 100 to 150 young people. But I project that it'll be a lot bigger after this cohort because we're only planning to take about 20, 20 young adults. Classes will start on March, March 4th. And then we do a mental toughness the last week of February. We are also in the process of reapplying for our DOL grant, so it's due February. So Shabana's been working really hard on that. And those are all of my updates that I have.
I was just wondering, just out of curiosity, with that number of students, or 75 that showed up on, you know, for this orientation or possibly getting into youth bill program, have you, I contacted you from either Urbana or Champagne Unit 4 or 116 about what we're doing, or what they're doing, or why there are 75 people that aren't in their proper schools?
Yes, we, we do, we do talk to both districts. I know Joby has regular meetings with caseworkers from both Champagne and Urbana school districts. I will say that some of the young people, a good chunk of them, were either, were like out of the traditional school age, so we're looking at like 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, to 24-years of age, people that may have dropped out some time ago and are looking to come back. But also, a good chunk of them were students who are currently enrolled or who may be looking at dropping out, or may not be able to continue on with high school. Maybe they're expelled, they're being placed in alternative education programs, things like that. But we do communicate with the, with the districts. Yes, sir.
Chairman Henry, one of the issues is, which is, has been good for us, is that the word has gotten out about youth bill and how successful it is. So those students in 116 and Unit 4 who are getting struggling have been told by other students who have come to our program that youth bill has helped them. So students are now looking to come to youth bill when they get into a situation where they're credit deficient. And so youth bill has been an out for them. So it's, we've done such a good job to, now that the community hears it, the kids are hearing it, so now they're like, well, I'm not, it's not working for Unit 116 or Unit 4, hey, let me try youth bill. So that's, that's why, that's why our numbers are growing. You hear it all the time, and the program I work with, the LIF program, we hear kids all the time saying, hey, by my 10th grade year, if I'm not to a certain point, I'm going to youth bill. And we have to continue, it's not quite that easy. But it's because of the great job youth bill has done, that's why we're getting so many kids.
What can we do so, so some of those kids don't get lost in the youth bill? Do we need to create something else, or get something else, or get something figured?
Well, we've got some really great partners that we make referrals to, because youth bill isn't for everybody. And so we do make referrals to Dream, to, you know, all the different other programs. First Followers program is really amazing. And so if it doesn't fit for us, if they're not fit for us, then we refer them out. And we've also gone into, we've also established partnerships to allow Dream and First Followers to use our license and Pem Foster, so that helps them earn a high school diploma. And so, you know, all three of our programs are working together, you know, I would say, very well to try to capture as many young people in the community that are in need of job training or education. And we're all pooling our resources to make sure that, you know, you know, it's not a competition, but we're just providing what's available to as many young people as possible.
Can I say something about the local? So out of that 75, I want to say about 20% of those individuals have been expelled from school. And they've been giving these young folks two-year expulsions. So you just got to keep in mind, you have a 16-year-old that's been expelled from school, they can't go back until they're 18, and then now they're two years behind, but they starting out already, upon expulsion, already a year or so behind. So that's why we're getting individuals, like Lily mentioned, we have, we have quite a few, I want to say it's about maybe about 30, 40% of the individuals that came were over the age of 18, and they haven't been in school. And, but it's also, we, like she said, we do partner with other organizations. I, I see Dr. Nass and Dr. Mitchell over there at Urbana Neighborhood Connections have a program where they're going to do like reading and math and stuff with individuals that's been expelled from school, just to keep them on track so when they do finally be able to get back to school, they can get on track, so, yeah.
So they are willing to go back to school at the age of 19 or 18?
A lot of them are, you know, a lot, they can't go back to the traditional school, but they're going to Urbana, Don Ed, or they're going to some type, some type of program like that. And then youth bill is an option, Dream has a program where they're working with people, First Followers, like you said, at Urbana.
I was thinking the high school, don't they want to go back to high school?
No, at that point, they can't a lot of times.
Well, technically, if they have, if they have an IPA, they, they are supposed to be able to serve them until they're 21 years old.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's good information. In addition, once we get in over on Fire New York Street, there'll be some more room to grow over there, more space utilization and stuff. So that's, that's really good, just keep up the good work.
Yeah, we got to tap into, we definitely have to tap into some more corporate funding, because like, yeah, we had 75 here, but I still have a list of like 75 on there. So like, we have a lot of young folks that's, that need assistance, and, you know, they, they're trying to youth bill. You know, we, we, what's happening in the community, you know, we can toot our horn, because we, you know, they want to come here. You know, they complain about Ready and Novac, and, you know, even adult, you know, about adult ed. So, you know, yeah, we're going to, that's one of my goals in '24, to tap into some of these corporate.
Well, you know, this team is here, so you know, you tap into how these kids we have served.
So that's all we have for on the executive board to follow this. If the board has any other questions, we can take that. So, that's all we have for on the executive board of the board. If there's any other questions, we can take that away.
Okay. So, we're now getting a group of, I need to go forward to that one there. Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you for that exposition of public help. It was very, very interesting and very useful. I really think that it brought a lot of knowledge to this to me, you know, and I think to most of us. Thank you for that. I just wanted to mention that before I started. In the financial part, in December of 2023, we made this disbursement from our Housing Authority General Fund Account of about $253,000. I would say this month, the expenses were more spread out because I couldn't pinpoint more than two checks that were over $10,000. One of them was a check to Social Solutions Global, which was a software for Youth Bill, which was actually prorated 50/50 between the Urbana Grant and the Department of Labor Grant. It's a software that actually is consumable, so it was treated as an expense. It was mentioned earlier that check also to Chicago Taro Trust Company, the down payment for the homeownership of this lady, Taysha Carroll. Those were mainly the expenses. We, I did want to mention also something that belonged to November, but I didn't have a chance to mention it. There was a payment to Building Systems of Illinois for the renovation of A075 here. And that was about $189,000. Those are, those were the major disbursements in the month. And I wanna, I wanna go to the, to the real versus budget. This is the December one, and I usually am very careful to point out that this is a preliminary budget to actual comparison. Basically, unlike the other months, December usually has several closings due to the time you make first like a soft closing. But something I found interesting was the fact that on our revenue, we actually, we were behind in the budget in previous months. But we ended up actually having more revenue than was budgeted by $282,000. And part of the explanation for that, and again, that was also mentioned earlier, when Jennifer explained about what we've been doing, I would say in an interdepartmental effort to get some additional or recover some additional funding from HAD. We received $968,800 additional dollars in December. And this was a consequence of the BMS corrections and analyzing a little bit of how we are reporting. So, that's actually one of the main components that put us over the budget and revenue. I do want to point out that also from the property management budget, real versus budget, excuse me, the budget components, which are the ones that we have total control over them, we did get an operating income of $806,000. So, we actually came out with that. That's what I wanted to highlight. Do you have any additional questions?
Chair, I need the approval of financial, please.
I have a motion for the approval in a second. Okay, then we have RoKam, please.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull. Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any public comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none?
Yes, we do.
Personnel. We will be coming back. We will be coming back. Then we need to address item number six, start a new business.
Okay, we need to move towards a closed session. And we need a motion.
I'm moving to the closed session.
We'll probably move in a second, then we move into closed session. And we will be coming back after, after we finish our business. RoKam?
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Salem.
Yes.
Okay, so we're back in open session. All the commissioners are present again with the exception of Commissioner Salem, who may be burping. And at this point, we can, just Commissioner Henry, Chairman, we can go back to item 6A, approval of salary increases and bonuses.
Okay. I have new business going ahead. I'd like to have a recommendation for a motion to approve the salary increases and bonuses. I'd like to move that we approve the salaries and bonuses. I say, been properly moved in second, RoKam?
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
And for the record, you can note that the salary increases are up to 3% and the bonuses are up to 4%, which we have in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other business, I would make a recommendation for a chairman. That's about, we move to the second, RoKam, for chairman?
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Now, one other, if you can, I know we're quick, but we're out. When we came out of the closed session, if you can show during closed session, we discussed personnel and potential man acquisition. Thank you.